I would like to present this presentation just for the record verifying the communication and receipt which was just read. I'd like to clarify that I did not request for Wusunah and that I have been available in the meeting that we first that I was ready to the record to please you. One question about the Krungo at LRA. Let me start by indicating that even though LRA has the statutory mandate to collect the dividend revenue from the country, we do so in collaboration with many other agencies of government. And over the years, the LRA-
Sir, what is your disturbing right? What's going on?
He said he wanted to-
What?
I cheated, man.
If you wait there, hey, let a man wait there, you're quiet, they go ask, that is what thing.
I cheated, man. This way, the officer there, I'm doing the weight. I'm sorry, sir. He did a rough job for all sides.
He is my commissioner of customs and the lead on the project of the letter.
So Senator, sadu-
Yeah, let him come and take the-
Okay.
Yes, sir.
When he, when he do wait, I said, "Oh, hello."
I'm not old there, so I do hear some-
I'm not sure in the letter where you do appear.
No, you do not mention, so-
No, he said, "Yeah, no need."
No need.
Yeah, no need.
But then he tried sitting there.
He gets it there, he don't-
He's a source.
Source, yeah.
So I did sit there and see.
Yeah, you know, you're not accepting that, yes.
Mr. Chair, we spoke, I would really like for him to sit there because he has contacts with the-
Sit back, you please, and do this way. Close on your arm. And sit by it.
He love me but say he had enough caffeine and media on his phone, call around. Yeah, he had a little loose. I probably stay up. They own money, they in front here, you was standing over there. They didn't want it.
What word?
Thank you. As I was saying, in the execution of our mandate, we have to collaborate with many other agencies of government that have statutory mandates on revenue operations. And in that role, we have over the years, even personally, provided resources to those agencies to enhance revenue mobilization. In a specific instance case regarding purchase of vehicles, I just like to answer in lodges, let me give you some historicity around the performance of their contracts and the purchase of vehicles under those contracts. In July nineteen twenty twelve, the governor of Liberia represented by now senator Amar Tony, then minister of finance, Honorable Miradat Deslo, who was minister of commerce at the time, and Honorable Christiana Ta, who was standing general minister of justice at the time, signed a contract with Bevac represented by Mr. Nabiu Abu Hassan, who is formerly one of the executives of MTS services. Under that agreement, Bevac, in addition to other capacity building support, procured ten vehicles for customs, some of which were given to other customs support services agencies. On September thirty eighth, twenty sixteen, the governor of Liberia, this time represented by Honorable Wanam Kamara, who was then minister of finance, Honorable Axoff Ade, who was minister of commerce, Honorable Frederick D. Chiru, minister of justice, and Honorable Ephraim Tamba, who was at the time commissioner general of the Liberia Revenue Authority, signed another custom inspection services contract with Bevac represented by French national named Mr. King Leonard Hope as managing director. Under that agreement, Bevac provided capacity building support to customs, including provision of equipment, contribution of residential building to customs, software and many others, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Additionally, the capacity building support also included the provision of three vehicles and ten motorbikes for the ministry of commerce. In twenty eighteen, the governor of Liberia honored the postices of the commissioner general of the Liberia Revenue Authority and Minister of Commerce at the time Honorable Wilson K. Chapet and others extended the Bevac contract and under wish extension, the LRA and the Ministry of Commerce benefited from capacity building support of approximately four hundred thousand. Under that custom capacity building support fund, vehicles were procured for deputy ministers at the Ministry of Commerce. Those vehicles are still being used by the Ministry of Commerce as we speak. On July one, twenty twenty-one, the government of Liberia represented by Honorable Samuel D. Tway, then minister of finance, Honorable Molewulek Gray, chairman of the National Investment Commission, Honorable Magwen Deeks, then commerce minister, Honorable Frank Musabdin Junior, then minister of justice, and Honorable Thomas Dodna, then commissioner general of LRA, signed custom destination inspection services contract with MTS represented by Mr. Ramsey Abu Hassan as chief executive officer. Under the agreement, the LRA, in keeping with statute, benefits a twenty percent share of fees in turnip for both hard and soft capacity building support to customs. I, as commissioner general, was never in government at the time nor a signatory to this contract. I inherited that contract and almost three years later from the last administration. In my utmost respect for the rule of law and the sanctity of contracts, I have only endeavored to cure any defects in the contract's execution irrespective of whether or not the government or the contract is at fault for such, the contractor is at fault for this defect. All of my actions surrounding this contract have been all but to achieve two goals. One, respect the rule of law relating to contracts, and two, get the maximum benefit the government negotiator for itself in the contract. Regarding the allocation to the Ministry of Commerce, the current subject of this meeting, following all the precedents from my predecessors, I have outlined and considering the Ministry of Commerce as a key stakeholder to LRA particularly customs, was constrained at the beginning of the financial year, we accepted a request to make good faith allocation as it has always been done by my predecessors. The question that remains unanswered in my mind is, what did my predecessors of the last two administrations do right by providing resources for the procure purchase of vehicles for the Ministry of Commerce as well as other assets for other agencies of government? What did they do right? Are they wrong? Why did it do then that was right, but now we do the same thing and it's wrong? Unless the legislature, in its magnificent wisdom, grants onto us the power to do so, the LRA without legal authority to determine or to enforce the specifications and value of vehicles that a government agency buys. Now, let me just give you further examples of how LRA has utilized resources allocated to it to enhance the collection of domestic revenue. And, and, and to do that, I like to say that this very august body, the legislature, has also benefited from resources expended by LRA in order for members to join study tours and others. As we speak right now, to investigate and analyze what our counterpart countries are doing in a subregion, we now have a proposal between the subcommittees from the senate and the house for a study tour in our neighboring country to learn how they are solving the problem related to allocation similar to the rule fund. And that request is before us for sponsorship of members of this august body, of this legislature for that purpose. If that is not wrong, how is extending the resources to enhance domestic revenue mobilization wrong? One, we have aided the Liberia National Service, Fire Service, in printing fire service certificates. Two, we have funded joint enforcement exercises with the Ministry of Labor on work permit, with the Liberia Immigration Service on resident permit, with the Ministry of Transport on vehicle registration. As a matter of fact, as we speak, we are currently funding a joint mission by the Ministry of Transport and the LRA in the counties for vehicle registration inspection as we speak this very moment. The Liberia National Police also for vehicle registration, the Ministry of Commerce and the Liberia Business Registry for licenses. As we speak again, we have just procured, as you all know, LTA has granted license to Starlink to operate in Liberia. I'm pleased to report that LRA has been the first customer. We have procured the first set of fifty terminals, those satellite terminals, because we want to ensure that we have redundancies at all of our revenue collection sites in Monrovia and also to ensure that every custom office, every custom post across this country and every tax office across this country is connected in real time to our revenue collection system. We believe those are the things that are required to raise the revenue to billions of dollars and so the resources you have provided to us, though legal and not as adequate as we would love it to be, we are ensuring that it is implemented and utilized in ways that result in the increase in domestic revenue mobilization. Before I continue, I just like to point out that because of these strategies and because we've utilized the public resources as you have entrusted to us, that is why as at September thirtieth, our performance compared to last year's same time is fifty-three million dollars more. Despite the fact that nothing substantive are changing economy, but we were able to generate fifty-three million dollars more. As we speak, despite the recast, our internal target is still to raise seven hundred million dollars this year and we are on course to achieve that knocking on wood. We believe that we'll do that. To be able to do that, we have to ensure that, for instance, if the passport center, if the passport unit at the Ministry of Foreign Affairs goes down for any reason and we are not collecting resources, if LRA has its own resources, we have to expand our resource to make sure that our system is up and working. And we do the same thing with the Ministry of Transport, we just recently implemented a new system at the Ministry of Transport to enhance efficiency. As we speak, my technicians are at the business registry and we are already working to ensure that we install the fifty devices that I just mentioned have just arrived. Additionally, as you all know, there is a one-stop shop at the ministerial complex that is utilized by the Ministry of Transport, the Ministry of Commerce and others to collect GOL revenue. That one-stop shop was fully funded by the LRA, even though it is being used by other agencies of government. We've also funded the renovation of the Liberia Business Registry in twenty twenty and currently have a request from the Liberia Business Registry to provide support in terms of computers, printers and other things, which we are considering and hopefully will respond very favorably in the very short run. We have also funded internet services to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, like I mentioned before, the Liberia Business Registry to aid in the collection of revenue. We renovated the government of Liberia administrative building in Zorzo, Lofa County, to aid-
Hello? What? Uh, Mr. Witness, I think you do it quite well by taking us back, but you know, you get to the point because of time. You're late, you gave us a background already, or what LRA been doing. So now take us to, you know, the process that we do here.
Senator, with due respect, this is an issue that has been widely discussed in the media. Mr. Chair, if you may, please protect me.
Uh, Abba Dawa, Abba Jala. Please, Abba Pena, please, Senator Pena. You give on the background already, at least, you know, the history is there, that's why I'm sure you want to do a complaint. Now that you done that, let's go to the specific issue.
Senator, I will not be cut short in my, in my explanation.
What's that? The order, the order is the same. The order is the same, so you go to each of which you have brought.
That is, it is the issue I'm addressing. Yeah, the issue, if I understood the reading correctly-
Abba Jala, Abba Jala.
Yes, sir.
Please, please, we gave the opportunity and it's a good thing that you give us the background, all right? We got the background, what LRA been doing, we understand that. So just summarize and go to the issue for which you are here.
I already discussed the issue and I think it has pretty much come across, but since it is painful to others for me to provide a full context for the public's consumption, then we will stop here. When you ready, you ask your questions, we answer you.
Yeah, what's your honor?
Uh, the order here is, yeah, the order here is that the witness was presenting a global position and performance of the LRA and that's not the function, the purpose here. If the issue is presented on the capacity fund, then we'll know exactly that in the all of the expenditure is coming from that fund and we'll stick to that. That's the point. So yet, I don't see why the witness will want to dictate as to how we conduct our hearing.
So the point, you lay the background, we understand.
Mr. Chair, with due respect, if I remember the reading correctly of the communication I went to plenary, it says that we misallocated public resources. I think that is the cross. Yes, yes, yes. No, no, but, but the thing is, public, public resource is public resource, whether it comes from Metech, whether it comes from wherever, it's public resource. So the point I'm trying to labor, all these examples, is that we do have public resources allocated to us and I've just shown you. Yes, I've just sho-, I've just shown you, I've just shown you, in a particular case, I already addressed it, Senator. I addressed it already, yes, yes, let's move ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, well, now, they would, they be alcohol, they need to go, you know. Why you rap?
I think we should put a general of, of our, so it can inform our person. You are giving me a presentation, it makes reference to the father for our money in less nature and are benefited.
Yes, to benefit, yeah.
Uh-huh, so we need a script, document for us, so that it can inform our person who look at the message here. And so, yeah, that would fall in here for the-
It's the chair, I also agree with, also Bala. Because based on why you present or your computer, why would it look at other person? But not if you go us. The issue that I already by our colleague before he came today, and that why you have granted for that person, talking about carrying internet for effect, you have-
Chairman, let me come, let me come. Chairman, let me-
Oh, please, let's do it step by step.
Yeah, and Chairman, uh, no, I just want to throw light, yeah. Yeah, let me just, let me just say something. We got to guard, you know, the hearing. Yeah, so the communication to the CG inviting him, today's hearing did not see clearly, you know, before your presentation or what your submission will be, should be, you know, sent to members of the committee. Uh? Uh? No.
Colleagues, hello, colleagues.
No, that's not being protective, I just saying, we could listen to the, it would need the company would get it.
Hello? Hello? Abba Pena? Abba Pena? Okay, Mr. Okay. Abba Pena, please. Let's get on board. He suggested, we just think, uh, he suggested that the purpose, the, the reason he gave the background is to support the purpose for which he was invited, all right? And so, uh, that's why I think the colleagues are asking, we have to go back to that, to verify all of the things he say, he saw what he read, it's very important here. So let's do our-
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
The commissioner, the question say we invited him on the basis of the complaint from a senator. That's why we are here, right? So we know the issues for which we invited him. Our inquiry would not be on the basis of his presentation, why he going to present here to us, we know the issues and it is because of those issues that we invited him, unless we are saying that we don't know what we invited him for and we have to be guarded by his presentation to query him. Unless that's what we are saying.
Let it descend the sound.
There's a practice here, uh, where witnesses come over here, they gave us what they were requested to come and present, because we have to, we have to read what they presented and against what they presented to ask us, to ask them questions. So whether he went outside of the invitation or within the invitation, we have to have copy of his response. Yeah, you don't, it's a practice. It's a, the problem is, so yeah, yesterday, we didn't have to tell you that. It's a practice.
Yes, so, uh, uh, regarding, I, I think the point raised by Senator Delong is the, witness is making a presentation. Whether we accept it or not, we need to have a copy before us so that we can, because it would be asking him to go over again on what he's saying, like, for example, I would have asked again and say, Mr. Whether can you restate all what you just said? I don't think he want to do that because of time, so if I have a copy, I don't think, uh, we could ask for, we give him the break of ten, five minutes to go and bring it out and give it to us. We need to have a copy, so it will be specific, because the fact that he have stated here, those things, we can use it as additional, uh, 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 information on him, because he said it, because the media are listening, okay, measure the legislature, it, I mean, some of them could be true, some could be impossible, yeah, but we just need to have a copy.
It is quite important for all to be able to, to have the, 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 the presentation available to all who can ask questions.
All right.
I think the Gera consensus are, are postpone the hearing to a later date. Uh, so can we do it on Tuesday? I'm next way. Uh?
No, now you're following Tuesday.
Tuesday? You would do it Tuesday? Yeah, from media, have a session, yeah? You want? Three? Yeah, three o'clock, yeah. Yeah, all right. No, anything, come and say, let me read it down, so you put a record, let me put a record, so we can read the record. All, all right, okay. You want to say something, because I won't pass on this. Uh?
And I'm not to run it.
No, no, please, no, 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 that-
Chair, I'm in the bed in lodges.
Let it descend the water.
If I'm in bed in lodges, who actually kindly request that this be done on Thursday rather than Tuesday, that-
So, uh, so the witnesses, we think it's fair to postpone this meeting or the hearing to next Tuesday at three and, uh, as requested by our colleagues, yeah, do your presentation Saturday maybe on Monday, including the contract so that we'll be able to look at them and then we'll be done Tuesday at three. So not necessarily, we had, uh, we had three, for the three committees. So- Our telecables. But they're gonna go back, they're gonna go back to the cover. All right, thank, so, so, uh, so we ask that you bring, uh, your telecables or your presentation, please submit them before Tuesday so that you can have them, they will don't have to go back and forward. Hello? So, Tuesday, uh, Tuesday at three and, and with, based on- Hello, Mr. Jala? Senator, please. Based on this discussion, we don't need to send you a formal invitation, you remain on a, over the Tuesday at three o'clock.
I was, I was going to, yes, I was going to appeal to you, uh, since we have so many different obligations, we would like to appeal for us to be removed from honor of and we'll come back on, on the next appearance, who can-
But why you, why you seeming to have the open, why I'm going? Hello, Mr. Chairman, please, go in. We let the sergeant, the sergeant or the cabant Tuesday, please, I don't know. We let the sergeant, the sergeant, or the cabant Tuesday, we please the honor oath. Thank you.
Last thing, Mr. Chair, the contracts are really bulky. Will be okay for us to serve those electronically and print out a statement so as to save cost?
You know, send it electronically, and we'll put it in the advisory.
Print it.
Yeah, get printed, send it, I don't want it electronically. So thank you. No, let me the sergeant first. Say, say... No, 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 I'm forget. I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to owe you the gauze. Damage. Thank you, Tuesday, till the end.
Our folks, till next Tuesday, three P M. This popular hearing has been postponed. This is Spoon TV Live, thanks for watching.
Okay, so Spoon TV, of course, we're here live. Uh, we are here live, uh, at the Liberian Senate. Of course, a hearing here conducted by the Plenary of the Liberian Senate. Mr. Moda, Spoon TV, welcome. What do you make of the... Okay, so we want to see if we can speak with the Commerce, the former Commerce Minister, Mr. Ami Moda. So let's see if we can speak to him. There has been this confirmation hearing here today, of course, uh... The public hearing. Uh, Mr. Moda, uh, welcome to the media, sir. Um, but, but what do you make of the public hearing here today? It's been pushed to, uh, next Tuesday. Okay, so, uh, the former Commerce Minister have declined on making any comment on this. Let's see if we can, uh, take words from the, uh, let's see if we can take words from the former, that's the L R A Commissioner General, uh, Commissioner James Dorbor Jala, uh, on this particular issue. Commissioner, welcome to the media, sir. So, 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 Mr. What do you, what do you make of the postponement of the hearing today? The, 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 the folks, the folks, the folks, the folks are saying that, uh, the folks are saying you didn't come with a prepared text. Okay, so, uh, the Commerce, uh, that's the L R A Commissioner General, have equally declined on, uh, speaking to the media as well. Uh, but the, uh, public hearing today has been pushed to next Tuesday. The senators decided to push this hearing based on what determine as the failure as, uh... So folks, this is Spoon TV, thanks for watching, I hope this is helpful to you. And we'll subsequently bring you, uh, your food, your dinner, all of the happiness here and the girls, and the wishes you have.